Yes, Nancy, Susan?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport Public School, our budget hearing, which we will begin our first part of our school committee in the budget hearing and then move into our regular business meeting. So, Mrs. Kennedy, could you please call the roll?
Mr. DeCantin.
Here.
Mr. Corlack.
Here.
Mr. Lemon.
Here.
Mr. Hall, here.
President.
Mr. Hawke, sir.
Here.
Mr. Rehm.
Here.
And Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Thank you. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we turn it over to Superintendent McCarroll and Nancy Lysick.
Okay. We've done an update on special education data. There were some requests with some additional information. So, the first page you see is the students served. That's the special education students per year. The next page is a breakdown of legal costs by year, with FY12 being extremely high. Last year and this year is about the same. We haven't expended our full budget for this year as yet, but it has been encumbered.
The third page is looking at the cost centers, and you can see that special education is a significant portion of our budget, at 28.2 percent, in comparison to the other hearings.
FY19 is going to fall above the same, maybe one point difference.
Susan, if I could just, um, just to jump back to the students served, that number of 410, does that reflect IDPs and 504 plans?
Not 504.
So, 504 is not...
It's not part of special education.
So, there are, there's an additional number of students that are getting 504 support?
There are additional students, yes.
Do you have a ballpark for that?
Uh, no, I don't. It doesn't come out of the special education budget, but I can get that if I want to sign it.
Where does that come out of?
It's out of the regular budget. Uh, we have a line item in our budget for 504. Most of it's consulting, but... So, the next page is tuition outplacement costs. It does go up a little bit each year. They have the, um, the outplacement sites can go up 3% each year in costs, and can also vary by placement itself. If you have a child that, you know, someone who's graduated out, or someone's come back, and then someone else has gone out, it's a go to a higher place, then obviously the cost goes up considerably. Uh, now, we have about 26 students outplaced. Last year was about the same. FY13 was 23, so we stay similar, you know, in that range. This includes the LEA and circuit breaker funds.
Can I ask you a question? So, FY17, we spent $59,355 on 366 students. That number for FY18 increases by, looks like 44 students, but only $645.
What pages are you referring to?
Just the first two, the students served and the legal costs. Oh, those are just legal costs, sorry.
Legal, the legal costs.
Legal costs, okay. So, those are, okay. Those are exceptionally well-served students. Okay, legal costs.
Yeah.
Got it.
Sure. So, we, this is the process in terms of the, as you know, we've spoken about that previous meetings, the revenue and expenses, and we have been working on a shortfall. At one point, we had a shortfall of almost $1.2 million, and now we're down to a shortfall of about $173,000. So, we're going to try to balance the budget, and we'll continue to take a look at that and see what we can do. It has been a joint effort with the members of the leadership team, working with them. We have cut in the last round, we have cut pretty significantly into supplies. We have not cut any of the previous positions that I had talked about in terms of new positions. Those still remain in the budget, and there is, there are positions for every building that I, I've spoken to you about before, and for the members of the public. That includes counseling person at Breznerhand, it includes a special education position at Mullen, it includes a .5 reading teacher for middle school, and then some STEM math at the high school. Those are the major positions that are still included in the budget at this point.
And you can see the progress we've made on the next one. If you go to the last page on that, that's dated 3/26. We started out at 482.9 deficit, and now we're at 173. We have added some revenue to preschool choice. We have 10 students at grade nine. We have five more, so that will even go up $25,000 more, and the shortfall will drop below 150. Circuit breaker revenue, extraordinary relief. As I said before, we do qualify, but we won't know for sure until mid-April or so if DSS has been funded at all. And Title I, Angela did some research on her Title I, and she was able to give us another $50,000 on salaries. And the expenses decreased, those are, majority of that is in supplies and materials, except for the high school, $40,000 was athletics by not bringing golf, or...
No, it was, um...
What is it?
Hockey.
Hockey. Into, um...
Girls hockey.
The one that they're playing out off-site right now. We were going to bring that program in-house, and eventually we would have seen a season of savings, but by taking it off the budget for this year, we saved money. We did add a .5 at the high school, speech and language, which is currently being paid out of contracted services, but needs to move to salary. The cost of contracted services is about twice that.
So, it's, so it's in there? It's just moving from one line item to the other? That was your question, David.
Right, because I just didn't see it on the next page, the staff.
Yep.
Susan, did you look anymore at, like, possible choice in other grades?
Yeah, well, that's one of the things that we're going to talk about tonight.
Okay.
That's on the agenda for today.
Okay.
And the next pages are a breakdown by line item at each site, updated with any changes that we've made, similar to what you have before. There's just been some changes in supplies and materials on each line.
You know, just as a reminder, too, it is again, it's a combination of the revenue and the expense that we have to try to find the balance there. So, you know, we can, we can only go so far with supplies, because obviously we have to have paper, and we have to have books, and, and things for students to use in the classroom. We next will have some conversation, the leadership team will have some conversation around class size, and whether or not, if we want to increase class size in any grade levels, and if there were cost savings there. But one thing that I, I do want to, initially, we had gone into this, you know, really hoping that we would not be, we would not have to lay anyone off in terms of cost savings. But one of the things that I would like the school committee to understand is that if we, if we get to that point where we're laying people off, it still costs us money because of unemployment. So, we have to, we'd actually have to raise, if we were going to be cutting staff, we'd have to raise our unemployment line. So, I want to make sure the school committee is aware of that.
Let me do the one to ask the very difficult question, that is, a conversation around class size also become, by its very nature, a conversation about laying off staff?
Yes. Yes.
I mean, it's kind of a euphemism, Mr. DeCantin.
So, we have 10 people that have confirmed choice for the high school so far?
Actually, it's gone up to 15, hasn't it, or 16?
We actually have, we have had, we have 16 applications. We have not confirmed anyone yet.
So, we'll need to do a lottery, do...
We'll, we'll have to do a lottery, yes.
Okay. Second question, I guess, is, it is a fairly significant cut in supplies. How is that going to affect our programming?
I'm going to look at the principals, because, yes.
I'll look at them, too.
How, the question was, how will the cuts in supplies impact programming? And I'm going to look at the principals to consider the ones...
It's not going to be in a positive way, but, you know, we're back playing the show game where we're moving money around. Do I wish we had all of our supply money? Yes. Can we go a year where we are cutting, you know, 50%? The answer is yes. So, it's not catastrophic, but it, it will have some impact. We, we don't know yet at the high school, because we don't know what courses the kids have, are going to get once the schedules run low. Just about ready to run our first schedule to see where our kids are going to be put in the different courses and directors.
Now, you know, just, Mike, typically, what would you be spending that supply money on? What are the kinds of items that...
Well, there's, there's a lot of things that we have to replace every year. There's, you know, regular supplies, there's money that was cut. You know, again, I think we have replenished a lot over the last couple of years, so again, I don't think a one-year hit on supply is just going to be, you know, that's enough. I think we can move some monies around as we move through and do this every year, except, you know, Nancy sent me an updated budget today, I'm looking at that. You know, we're constantly monitoring where the money is being spent, but the big-ticket items that we wanted for this year, specifically the bi, the new biology books for ninth grade biology are almost ready to go on order. That money's still there, so that, to me, was the, was the biggest cost expense as far as any supplies or books that were needed at the high school. I think there's enough money to allocate next year and possibly do some shifting around to cover any unexpected, you know, supply expenses that belong to me.
And just to clarify, you think you'll get in under the wire on order of new bio books?
Yes, the bio books are, I'm just working with the company right now, looking for them to reduce some of their shipping costs for us, so that we can actually get more books.
I have an SUV, I'd be happy to go get some of those books, if it reduces the cost. Thank you. Mike, do other principals want to weigh in on the impact?
Uh, sure. Who's going to speak first? We ended up taking out 10% on every line item, the supplies, materials, and it's an additional funds on various line items. We will not be able to purchase things like universal supports, so additional cushy seats for the children to have, the therapeutic names of the chairs, seat chairs, maybe less highlighted paper. There, there are a number of things that we will really purchase, but then there are other things that we just can't live without at the level of, you know, the day-to-day stuff, paper, writing crayons, and pencils, and highlighting tape, and, you know, all kinds of things. So, but we're going to have to do best with hand protests that we put into place, and I think David wanted to say something.
Yeah, I would just add, at the preschool and kindergarten level, a couple of years ago, we got some kindergarten grant, which gave us additionally about $6,000 in supplies every year at the K level alone. This year, we took another 10% off of kindergarten, plus we took $18,000 off of our supplies and materials prior to the 10% cut. So, we're good by the, the very basics. You know, at kindergarten and early childhood, it's a lot of hands-on materials, a lot of consumable materials that we go through. At preschool, I had initially requested that we put in a little bit more money, because preschool is not really making it within the money that I had budgeted for them for the past few years, so I thought that they were not overspending, because, that they would have liked to overspend, so initially I had to budget $2,000 more at the preschool level, and not only did I take that out, but I took the additional 10%. So, it's, it's going to be tight. You know, we will make it work, but it's certainly, you know, we won't be able to purchase a lot of art materials, or enrichment materials, and other things that we like to have for our program to keep it progressive and hands-on.
You know, I think we're still reaping the benefits, I would say, from the new school, because we were able to, you know, order so many resources for all of our programs, that at some point in the future, we're going to need to start and develop what we also need to replenish beyond consumables. So, you know, we take a look at it, line item by line item, and very specifically, we're working with teachers to help develop our budget, as well as the school council.
And, and I would just, I would concur that, definitely the new school and everything that came with it has been amazing, but we are at the point, like, where we need to replace some of the rugs in the elementary classrooms, and those are our big-ticket items. Those are generally like $600 a classroom, and so we're holding on that.
Can either of the principals or administrators want to weigh in?
I, I think it's very similar for us. There are a few costs that we generally incur for, like, student projects, things like that, that will go away with some of our cuts in supplies, that will either have to get turned over to parents and families to take care of, or the teachers will just have to change how some of the things that happened in the past project was, so, but other than that, very similar.
I would reiterate what everybody else says. I mean, the bottom line is, I cut a ton out of Mullen supplies and materials. We are going to be very close to bare bones, but I need people. So, if it comes to people or materials, I'll go a year with, and in discussion with my teachers and everybody, we'll go a year with, you know, minimum to get, to be able to keep a person working with the kids. That's the priority.
Terrific, thank you. Any questions?
I was just going to say, I mean, that's what I noticed on this, on this list of, is all the people crossed off. The .2 here, the .2 there, the new BCBA, or the social student support intervention like the, the Mullen, the kindergarten, sorry, I'm trying to read this, kindergarten teachers and that sort of thing. Like, are we okay without all of these people?
I think that if they, each building identified what their, what their top priority was, and we had a meeting where people were comfortable saying, this is bare bones, this is what I absolutely have to have. It would be nice to have the other positions, because they would obviously provide more support, but at Breznerhand, they felt that social work was critical. At Mullen, Tara feels that the special education position is critical. The reading position was critical at the middle school, and STEM math at the high school was critical. So, those are why they're still in the budget.
Okay. I guess I always think about, you know, the curriculum positions we have in the district, and whether those are luxuries or still considered critical. And I know, you know, it's uncomfortable to talk about them all, but I guess that's where my thought goes. I'd rather have people who work directly with kids than curriculum support positions.
Well, I, I certainly think that the personal support positions that we have, I mean, we have two additional positions, and I think that they are used very wisely. I think that they, I think...
I wasn't, I'm not questioning that, I'm not questioning them, I'm just, year after year, we're talking about not adding and not having, and going bare bones with... So, that's, that's where, that's where my head immediately goes, is...
Well, I, I think that as we move forward, I mean, we've been able to make significant cuts at this point. We have, you know, we're looking at a shortfall of $173,000, down from where we, you know, 486 the last time.
Right, but I would say it's 173,000 plus all this other stuff, because we talked about not having whatever it is that all the principals say would be really good to have for kids and programs, and I'm assuming, like, something like the .2 English teacher, or the BCBA at the Mullen aren't things that are just, hey, wouldn't it be nifty if? Like, somewhere, somebody's like, wow, we could really use a BCBA here, we could really use another English class, another section of English class. So, I mean, yes, the dollar amount has gone down to 173, but it's plus all this other stuff, especially if, you know, Tim brought up, it just turns on to the backs of parents. So, now, instead of sending in 60 crayons, I'm going to send the kids with 300 crayons in September. It's still, it's 173 plus.
You know, again, there are choices to be, choices to be made.
I know, but that's why I was just thinking about whether or not the curriculum positions are...
Can I ask a question? Um, do you have a placeholder for, like, the assistant principal position at the Breznerhand?
Yes.
What's the, do you know what the placeholder is, or...
A placeholder is still at the salary that was originally budgeted for the one that's included, because at the time of the budget, we didn't know that she would be leaving.
Okay, right.
Okay, no, I was just curious. And for example, even if we were to be able to find somebody, like, an administrator with curriculum skills, it's not, may not be as good as what, as when you have two people, but it's, like you said, a choice.
Yeah, just, just for the record, I just don't, I haven't checked my Twitter feed, but I'm, I'm afraid to look at it right now. I just want to clarify that Connie and I were proposing bringing our co-op girls' ice hockey program, which is under the offices of Masco, to be under the offices of Newburyport, and that's where we decided to wait a year on that, and that's where we deducted that money from, so this has no effect on the boys' hockey program at Newburyport High School, so I don't want people who might be listening to think, I mean, we would love to bring the girls' program under Newburyport. We have more players than Masco for the next couple of years, but I think putting it off in lieu of what we had to do with the budget was the right thing to do at this time. We just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mike.
Any colleagues can still participate in the existing agreement, but I'm not taking away their opportunity, because, again, fees are higher playing for them.
I don't know where to go with that. Just a question, I guess.
Susan, can I just ask a question? This is just more for just how, how you guys go about doing it, but like, you know, we're sending out two, you know, two-plus million for, for special education outplacement costs. Is that looked at as, at a year-by-year basis, and like, thinking, you know, can we add to our program to maybe keep some of those kids, or is it just that, you know, the, the needs are so severe, or just it's not cost-effective to look at something like that?
I'm going to let Christine to jump in in just a minute, but I, I think it's a combination of both. We definitely scrutinize that every year and look at that. I think one of the reasons why we want to keep the, why we want to add the .5 reading at the middle school is for exactly that reason, to avoid additional outplacements, because we're, we're providing some specialized reading instruction, that in some cases, people might be looking outside the district to get that. So, that's one of the things that we're doing there, so we're trying to, to find the balance. Christine, do you want to add anything?
I would just echo what, um, what you said. You know, an example of that, that I talked a little bit about before, is we do have a number of students who attend Landmark, and so Tim and Emily, and as well as some other folks, and myself have been working really pretty intensively on the language-based programming at the middle school, and hence the request for an increase of .5 reading teacher, so that's an area of focus for us. You know, many of our, um, many of our students have needs that are too intense to be addressed in district, but I think our language-based program is an area where, you know, we've really made some great strides this year, and we want to continue in that direction.
Christina, could I just sort of ask you to speculate a little bit? And what, what could we be doing? Is, is there something that we could be doing, or doing better in the district, that would bring a chunk of those students back? Five students, four students, six students? Is there something that we're not doing that, at this point, that is, that is conceptually possible for us to do, that might have that impact?
That's a really good question. I can tell you what I don't think it is. I honestly, I don't think it's staffing. I think, I think overall, we're very well-staffed. Sometimes you see districts that are unable or unwilling to provide students with a one-on-one aide, for example. That's, that's not us. We, we are very, very flexible with, with those kinds of, of needs and necessities. I'll go back to what I said before. I think, you know, we went to look at a program at Manchester Essex Regional, they have a language-based program in districts that has taken years for them to build up, and that's been very successful for them. So, I, I do think that, um, you know, Landmark is probably our biggest placement in terms of the number of students that, that attend an outplacement, and that is certainly appropriate for some students, and, but not, you know, not for all, and I, I feel very strongly that we can move in a direction to provide, you know, programming that's just as, you know, high-quality as, as...
Again, asking you to speculate, what does the year after next look like in terms of what kind of supports and resources are we going to need to put in place to keep us moving in that direction?
Yeah, I think, so, the year after next?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think one of the challenges that I find with Newburyport is that, you know, in sometimes, sometimes in larger districts, it's very predictable in terms of the number of students that you have moving up, so you know every year you have a cohort that's going to be moving into sixth grade, seventh grade, so on and so forth. One of the, the, I think, challenges is our numbers fluctuate year to year, so I would have to take a closer look to see who's moving up. However, I will say, um, you know, my hope is that by the year after next, the middle school programming will sort of be, you know, shored up in terms of the language-based programming, and that we'll be able to kind of expand on, on what we've done there. I will say Emily Russen has been a huge resource for us with that, she's been critical in that effort. So, you know, I think we'd be looking at kind of trying to expand that in either direction, whether it's down to, you know, Mullen has a language-based program before, and we assess that every year based on student needs. Some years, the need is not there. So, I think to expand that.
Do other people have questions? Because I have one more.
I have a question about the, so if you were able to bring in 10 kids, can the parents still say, no, we want to send them out?
That's a good question.
So, if we say our thing meets whatever Landmark's does?
I think, I, I think that they could challenge that, and we would have to prove to them that we could do that.
Prove that we have the services.
Right. I think that's how that works.
Good.
I guess the question that I had, Christine, and this is something as, as well for Amy to answer, do you see our ability to provide a social worker at the Breznerhand as helping us to really look at what's going on with these kids in terms of their lives, and in terms of their both academic and social-emotional needs? Will that have an impact, do you think, as these kids move up through our system?
I do. I can't, you know, I'll just say that the number, we have a very small number of students who are outplaced due to social-emotional needs. I would have to look to see whether that's grown over the, the past years, but we are absolutely seeing an increasing need at earlier stages, you know, for that. And, and, you know, especially, and Amy and Christine can kind of speak to this more, you know, every year, we've absolutely seen, and we're not alone, we've talked with other districts, and this is a trend that's going to continue, seeing more students at younger ages with trauma backgrounds, really significant social-emotional challenges, and, and difficult behaviors. So, I think, you know, one area, that, that parent outreach and connecting with kind of agencies... of agencies, our councils do an amazing job of that. It, it, you know, it can, at times, take them away from, you know, working with students. So I don't know if you want to add to...
So I would just add that the trend, even when I go to early intervention meetings, the trends that are coming into early childhood at preschool and kindergarten, are many more children with neonatal abstinence syndrome due to the opioid crisis. Oftentimes, those children are highly dysregulated with a lot of behaviors and social-emotional concerns. We all see, so are seeing a lot of children that are extremely medically fragile, which creates a whole nother impact on the family in terms of caring for children with those intense needs. Those children are now surviving birth, and perhaps they did not five years ago, and they are in our schools. And again, the trauma piece. And so the social worker was a whole to better link supports for the whole family as an outreach to families and not just be like a school-based model. Truly, we could even have a school adjustment counselor, but we thought that a school social worker could help kind of embrace the bigger picture, because we do have very young children in families that are in crisis every day. And I think that we're doing a really good job trying to manage them, but we have a lot to learn. And we have, if we look at our professional development, it's mostly been geared towards trauma, towards supporting anxiety, depression, social-emotional, mental health, and very, very young children. And any resource that we can get to help us with that would be a blessing.
We have Colleen Wild, who's been out on maternity leave, and she just returned today. And we did everything we could, as we were talking with Susan for days, in terms of maybe being able to maintain the long-term substitute school adjustment counselor, because we could use all three all the time. That's the reality of where we are today. And it's, it's a necessity. And it certainly isn't luxury by any stretch of imagination.
Yeah, I, I, there should be no implication that the school committee, and I will speak here for the school committee, sees this position as a luxury. This is something we support very strongly. And, and I, and I think that we sort of have the tip of an iceberg here that, that the community has not wrapped its head around, and the fact that we talk about the opioid crisis and everybody thinks about thirty-year-old people with addiction. But in fact, this is really impacting families both physiologically and emotionally. And we're seeing these kids, and we need to try to be as prepared as we can to serve them, because they are our kids, they are in this community, and we have an obligation.
And I would just add to that, Bruce, that with that, we see a lot of grandparents raising children.
Absolutely.
Because they're, you know, perhaps their child had an addiction. And, you know, just knowing a grandparent now knows how to navigate the social, the school system, how to get the resources they need, is, they're not only dealing with the grief of perhaps having a child who's addicted or that they've lost, but now also raising a child that has experienced trauma as the primary caregiver. So we have a lot of those cases that seem to be growing more this year.
Our, the individual from the Department of Education who has started our coordinated program, you actually said that to me. She said, wow, I'm really surprised you have a lot of grandparents who are, who are caring for, for children. So that, you know, was notable to her as well.
I think we're all going to need a social worker. I mean, that's the reality. I just feel like we need to like be thinking about the future, and if you watch anything at all related to education, trauma is huge right now. And I think it's really important for all of us to understand the definition of trauma and for the community to understand the definition of trauma. It isn't necessarily that a child went through, you know, maybe a fire in the home. Trauma is very individual. And so children in the same family that went through something, one child may have symptoms of trauma where another child doesn't. And we have classrooms of children sitting in front of us, and you often don't know the background, you don't know the history. So kids exhibiting different types of behaviors and different types of, you know, emotions may have a trauma history. And it's a, it's a pretty broad definition of what trauma is, and it, you know, it all came about around, you know, a study around children experiencing trauma and then what their lives look like years down the road as adults. It's very powerful, and, you know, it doesn't matter the town or the neighborhood. It crosses socioeconomic lines. And I just think it needs to be on the forefront of our radar, because the only way we can improve is having the supports in place and putting in universal supports. And I think, you know, you have an administrative team that's done a lot of work around it, and we're doing a lot of work with our staff around it, but we're going to continue, you know, we're going to need to do that and to continue with that.
Well, I guess that was my point. Like I see you crossed off the social student support, the BCBA, and the interventionists. And I, and I, and I know you wouldn't put those on there if you didn't think they were important, and I know how important they are. So I just, like, I want to make sure we're being as flexible as possible, considering how to get you and the kids at Newburyport, those people. Because, you know, not only is trauma difficult on a socio, on an emotional level, but it hits academic, which then adds to reading interventionists, which then sends kids out of district. So the whole thing is tied in. And, you know, what's the expression about slaying the dragon young, right? If you can get, if you can get at these kids young and make them feel supported and make them feel good and get them, and the class sizes thing becomes another piece of it. Build those relationships, it's all mixed in. It, it's, it's crushing to know that, that we're talking about scraping barrels instead of doing what we need by our kids.
And something that we don't talk about active enough is the impact on our staff. And, you know, I think that's another interesting conversation for another time. It's not by charity per se, but as the needs of our students are increasing, it has an impact on, on the adults.
It's exhausting.
And they, they give more than a hundred percent. They, they just, we have an amazing staff, and I want to say, I can speak to everybody across that district. And that's one of the greatest things about our district. I do have concerns about...
And I sort of chuckled, Karen, when you said we're all going to need social workers. Not that you're talking about us.
I think, just an important point, we had several staff that went to the ASCD conference, which was in Boston this year, and they came back and we were having...
ASCD?
Association for...
Supervision and...
Supervision Development.
Curriculum Development. And we were having a conversation, and one of the speakers at the conference talked about the fact that our, the educators who are in our buildings today were not trained for the children that are in front of them every day. And that that's a piece that we, and, and we, as the administrators, are trying to provide the professional development that they need. We're trying to provide them the information that they need about the impact of trauma on learning. So it really, it's, it's, it's become a very different classroom than what it was, say, even ten years ago.
You know, again, I, I said it before, I think that we really need to sort of creatively think about how we can put these issues in front of the community in a way that informs them and educates them so that they understand what we're struggling with now and that we want to do a good job. And I, again, it's the tip of the iceberg. I, I've only recently begun to sort of recognize that. You know, I should have recognized it sooner. But I, I really want to think, I want the school committee to think about ways in which we can provide opportunities for the community to learn, to get information, and we can work closely with you doing that. Because I, I think that that's really critical, because we're not going to see the resource needs to address these issues go down anytime soon. They will increase, so...
There was an article in the Globe today that talked about how all, you know, districts across the Commonwealth are facing this problem, and, and the state funding is also hindering the work that districts are doing.
But maybe we could do at some level like a trauma in the schools parent night. I don't know what you would call that, but, you know, the effects of trauma on learning, the effects of trauma on culture, the effects of, of mental health in today's schools.
Well, given, given the experience that we had doing school safety and the positive impact I think that had, I agree with you, Dave. I think that's a really good idea. We should think about how to do that.
Could start pushing some information out or, I don't know.
Other people have questions for the staff that are here. I just have a comment to make. Seems very cyclical. Every couple of years, we have a year like this where we really are making decisions about a point-two BCBA for a social worker. You guys have done a really tremendous job with absorbing some of the cuts that you are absorbing and still keeping the staff intact, still keeping the mission alive. And I, I really appreciate that. My checkbook's not going to go that far, but I, I really wish that we could, and hopefully in another year. We used to, before the, before the Six-Day War, there used to be a saying Jewish people had, it was, "Next year, when we get to Jerusalem, things are going to be different." That's the way it feels this year, next year. But, but we need to sort of hold the line and support our staff and support these kids and expand where we can expand to reach in a more sophisticated and creative way. And you guys have really taken some serious steps doing that. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I would just like to add what, to what Bruce said. I agree. I know this was an incredible, difficult budget year. We've had worse over, over the years, but the loss of revenues and the choice revenue has really had a tremendous impact. And I know how hard you all worked on these, but we're not at the end yet. We still haven't seen the House Ways and Means budget. And I would recommend that every single person sitting around this table in that audience reach out to the, their state legislatures and talk to them about, you know, we're doing what we can, you know, collectively as mayors and managers and people at the MMA level. We meet next Tuesday at the State House again with the Lieutenant Governor and with budget and, you know, administration and finance. And, you know, just keep pushing it every chance we get to talk about that twenty-dollar increase per student in this climate, and with a large chunk of that going over to fund students from Puerto Rico. It's, you know, and especially based on what you're, you know, presenting to us in terms of what you're seeing in terms of trauma and the social and economic needs of students that we've never seen before. It's very clear that, you know, we've been working really hard, I think, as a city, a lot of support for the schools. I think there's no question that, you know, those days where we used to have that artificial, you know, the school side, city side has long been gone. It's, we now have a pie, and you're a big piece of it, the biggest piece of the pie. And, you know, we keep trying to, you know, we've worked really hard to upgrade our schools. And as, as a community, we as mayor, as a school committee, city councilors, I think have been very supportive. But we can hope that there'll be additional funds put in. I also need to look at some of the money that has been put into a new bill regarding opioids and treatment and see if there's money that we could potentially tap into there. We need to do, I think, more partnerships with the schools in terms of using our grant rider. I know grants are difficult because they go away, but they can still help us during these, you know, difficult times. And, you know, we're still, we haven't balanced the city budget yet, and we're still working on that. And the Public Employee Commission on our health insurance, which is also a huge budget number that impacts, they are working to get us down from the six-point-five percent, which is what the number was we got from, from Maya, which is, a six-point-five percent increase is huge. So trying to whittle that down a little bit, too. So, I mean, we're working every way we can to try and, I think, collectively get there. So we're not done yet. And of this list, I think Susan said that it's prioritized who would come next, you know, as we look at this list, if we can, you know, find some additional funds to be able to address these staffing positions. Because I think you're right, people are more important, staffing is more important than, I mean, certainly supplies in your classroom, but it's really having, having the staff. So we're, we're still, and I know that, at least from my perspective, I have no intention of voting on this budget tonight, because there's still too many unknowns, and I don't think we can. You know, I think we need to get through the end of April and see where, what's happening at a state level. At that point, we should have, be, know what our, the PAC group has negotiated for health insurance, and then we can begin to really look to see if we can at least throw, shift a little bit of money to fund some of these positions.
If any of the other superintendent of board, Nancy, has anything they want to add, I want to, if we are done with our part, I'd like to open it up for the community. If there's anybody in the community has any questions or comments about where we are in the budget process. And again, to summarize, we have knocked down the deficit without losing the staff that we currently have and still being able to add critical staff very surgically in strategic positions. We still are looking at trying to knock down that, that figure. We had a discussion later tonight in our regular meeting about maybe opening up to additional choice, which will help. But we, we're still not at the end of the conversation, as the mayor said. Not only in terms of what we're going to be able to do, but, you know, whether the skies will open up, the light will shine, and we'll get some additional funding from the state.
Well, I think we appreciate us, you, hearing us and what our district needs are at this current time. And I think that we can walk away tonight with some hope, right? And we have to have hope. We can't let that go as we move forward. So I would just like to say thank you, because I, I feel very...
You are. I can see a hand hop up and back. If you could just give us your, your name so that we can capture the comment in a minute.
Sure. My name is James Snow. I'm a retired teacher with my last six years in guidance. And I can't stress to you enough, I taught in middle school, that you need that support of a social worker, an adjustment counselor. In my school, I worked in a very affluent community, we had an adjustment counselor and myself, and we would run straight up. And you need to be there by the phone, or you need somebody there, reliable, well-trained secretary, that when a parent calls and she is with you, an emergency in the family, a trauma, grandma died, grandma's coming to live with the family, mom has just been diagnosed with cancer, those things impact the, the children. And you build that trust to allow you as the guidance counselor to share with the teachers so that the teacher doesn't innocently say, Johnny didn't come in with his homework three nights in a row, didn't realize they were all in the hospital, went round. So I, I can't stress enough that for the help of all teachers and all raised, you need those kinds of supports for the kind of things that we have to deal with every day now. And I would ask that you, when you present to the public, would you elaborate on your initials, because you set a couple that I've already lost, and I haven't been out teaching that more. So when you, it was an essay something, and I don't know what that is.
BCBA? BCBA?
That. I don't remember that.
Let me turn it over to Christine.
Or a behavior analyst. So...
That doesn't count.
But no, yes, I mean, at least a lot of, when you do it, be careful with the initials that you don't...
No, I caught the superintendent, but I didn't catch myself, so I apologize.
But thank you. I appreciate all that the school's doing. I have some neighborhood kids in the schools, and they love the schools and speak highly of them, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And again, I think that when I, when I kind of look around the table and look at, look at the various experience that we all bring to the table, I think it's fair to say that we do understand what some of these issues are and the impact they're having. And it figured very largely in the strategic plan about working with... having, and it figured very largely in the strategic plan about working with the whole child, so this is part of that, but thank you very much for the feedback. Is there anybody else from the community that has a comment or thought or a question? I hope they were done.
To close the public hearing on the school budget, any motion to do so?
So moved.
Second?
And I believe we take a roll call vote for public meetings. Mrs. Kennedy, if you'll be so kind.
I'm sorry.
For a public meeting, we should do a roll call vote for a public hearing.
All right, Mr. Cole?
This is to adjourn, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke, is it?
Yes.
Mayor, what's your call?
Yes.
And this is me.
Yes.
Okay, so now we're calling to order...
Yeah, what's it called?
Okay, we're ready to continue. I call the, to order the meeting of the Newport School Committee Business Meeting for Monday the 2nd, 2018. Mrs. Kennedy, please call the roll.
Mr. DeCantus?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Madden?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Mr. Hawke, is it?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Great, we usually start the meeting with a public comment. If there's public who would like to make a comment, who isn't going to be on our agenda and make comments shortly, please feel free to do that. Seeing none, we move to the consent agenda. Do we have warrants?
Yes, we have three warrants. First one, I move that the following named bills of the Newport, pardon me, I move that the following named bills and payrolls of the Newport Public Schools mounting in the aggregate of $14,011.17 be approved through the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
All those in favor?
Aye. The next warrant, I move that the following named bills of the Newport Public Schools mounting in the aggregate $34,327.07 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. And the last warrant, I move that the following named bills of the Newport Public Schools mounting in the aggregate $285,332.65 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any conversation, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Would you have minutes of our last meeting from 1918, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, suggestions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. Our Newport High School representative is not here, but we do have somebody who is here.
I'd like to introduce you to Nathan Berry, and I'm going to invite Nathan to come up and sit beside Mr. Callahan, and Nathan would like the opportunity to tell you about Project 351.
Hello, everybody. My name is Nathan Berry, and I'm in eighth grade at the Knott Middle School down here, and this year I've had the honor of being the ambassador for Project 351, which is a great organization that brings together eighth graders from all across Massachusetts, from every single city and state, oh my gosh, in the state, and they lead community service in their own town. So, this year, the project that we are doing is called Cradles to Crayons. They are also an organization that helps out children in need who live in homelessness, poverty, and that type of thing, situation. And what Cradles to Crayons does, they help collect clothes and other essential things for children to thrive in everyday life, so they don't have to worry about like what they're going to wear, like how they will fit in in school and everything, and they can just worry about their schoolwork and things that are really important. So, at the school, we are leading a clothing drive, and we've been doing this for the past week and for the rest of this week, and the donation boxes can be found in the front hallway right outside the lobby, and I have come to all of you today because I just want to have some help here to help spread the word, because we defill the donation bins, and like, yeah, so I was just wondering if you guys have any suggestions or any way you can help spread the word for this, like tell family, friends, and like get maybe in the newspaper or something like that. So, I'm open to any questions.
Do you have a file?
Uh, yes, I do, not on me right now, though.
Could you email us, like a PDF or something like that?
Yes.
Because we could certainly post it on all sorts of message boards and social media.
Some social media that we can post it on. Is this on the website?
It will be.
The school's website? How about the city's website?
Then put it on there. You're also welcome to put a donation box in the city hall, we've done that before.
Oh, yeah.
And that way we can, you know, help, because a lot of people don't come to the schools, but other people come into city hall and they can see the box and come back and bring some. So, what specifically are you collecting, any type of clothes for children?
So, we're, so more specifically, we are collecting like new or gently-used pants, shirts, and also like a special request that they have is pajamas and socks, which are in new conditions, and also they're asking for shoes and coats as well, for, because of the winter seasons, which can be troubling for some families that don't have what they needed in those types of seasons, but it might be hard.
The, we usually get our school committee meetings written up in the newspaper, and Amanda Getchell from the Daily News, who'll be watching this, will be sure to mention that, I'll give her a call as well to talk about this program. I think it's really, I think community service is, it's how you pay the freight for living in the community, and I think that I'm really pleased to see an initiative like this taking place at the middle school. It's great.
Awesome. Well done. What age group for the clothes?
Um, zero to 12. Anyway.
So, you should, this stuff will start as soon as you get the PDF to Dave, we'll get it out.
It's the L address, you can send it to.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Great work. And before the seat gets cold, Steve, you can join us, or you can sit up here, watch you sit up here. Our next conversation is, we did get a list of capital projects that are sort of on our capital improvement list. In conversations with the city council, they think it would be a really good idea for us to be informed on a formal basis of these projects and take a vote that we are aware of them and approve or can move them forward. We don't get to approve the money, we just, it's an awareness thing that came out of joint ed. Steve is here to sort of talk with us about the list that we've all had in our packet, and in general how things have worked, the capital expenses here. Newport?
Steve, if you'd just let me go.
Steve? Looking for my copy of the list.
I looked for it. I'll try to see.
So, I just wanted to jump in for the moment. This is the binder that is updated every year, and by charter has to be submitted a capital, five-year capital plan to the city council, and the schools are included in this plan also.
The list that we got in our packet, are these done on that?
I think there was only one missing, wait, because you did send the IT.
Yes.
Yeah, so that did get in here, yes. So, they're all here, that's just a list form.
Steve, if you, we can either walk through this...
Just walk through these quickly?
Sure.
Each one of these?
Can I just ask one question before we do that? So, are we voting on this list today, or are we voting on each individual school capital project, or none of the above?
If we don't have a consensus about the list, then we can vote to each individual.
Okay, I was just curious.
And also just keep in mind that this is purely aspirational.
Right.
You know, and then, you know, we sit down, and then we sit with the, you know, the council will send it to, what we do is then pull out what are the, consider the top priority items, and then, and we work on funding those, and that list will go before the city council probably in May also, around the same time they get their budget.
All right, so starting at the top of the list, high school boiler number two interior brickwork. Inside of our boilers, or at least at the high school, are lined with brick to prevent the heat from the boiler to doing damage to the shell of the boiler. In this particular boiler, one wall is kind of listing inward, and will eventually probably tip over and make that boiler unusable until it gets repaired. So, this is an effort to get that fixed before that happens so that we don't run into an issue where we're down to just one boiler at the high school and having to rely on a single boiler. Second item is repairs for concrete sidewalks around the high school. This would probably be focused first right near the main entrance to the high school. There's a curb cut that comes up out of the circular driveway, right at the crosswalk from the main sidewalk up to the front steps, which is in pretty poor condition, is actually, there's actually a lip there that makes it difficult to get a wheelchair over, and is a trip hazard. There's also a broken piece of curb there, and issues with a couple of the other concrete panels, so these, this would focus on fixing that area first. Next one is the high school front walkway extension. If you walk down the, out the front door of the high school, down the main set of steps, turn to the right, you walk about 50 feet, the sidewalk ends. People obviously continue to walk past there, sometimes through snow or mud and whatever ever else happens to be there, to get down to the sidewalk at the bottom of the hill there. This would be just a, an extension or a connection between those two sidewalks so that people can get from one place to the other without having to go off road here.
There's a story behind that. Steve, I don't interrupt you, but I just, I had a question for you. Given that these two items, which have a high priority, both involve the same materials, the same contractors, is there a cost efficiency to doing them both at the same time?
There could be, because we would certainly put them out of the bid at the same time if we had the funding for both of them, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Next one down is Knott sidewalk repairs. You know, this would be something that I would go around probably this spring now that the snow has melted and see what, you know, where the priorities may have shifted on this. It might be the sidewalk that comes in from Johnson Street along, past the tennis courts that needs the most work, might be the fire road that goes around the back of the school that's in the most need, so it would be a matter of prioritizing that.
Steve, can you look at Safe Roots to School, that $1.3 million project, because they're doing Johnson Street? So, but I think that if there has been a change in any of the condition of the sidewalks as a result of this past winter, and that might not have been part of that assessment, that it would be worth looking at that, because they're planning on coming the end of April, Mast A O T and their consulting team to do a public hearing on Safe Roots to Schools. So, we want to make a change at that point, or emphasize that sidewalk is really important.
Okay, yeah, I spoke to, there's a new guy in planning, Greg Jones, today, he said he was kind of leading up that effort, the Safe Roots, and was looking in touch with me soon.
So, reach back to him then, because, you know, I think it's really important that, you know, we get the high priority sidewalks done, that could be part of this project.
Okay. Next one down is the Knott furniture replacement. When we did the renovation at the middle school, our furniture budget was very limited. There were some things that were replaced, but there's still a lot of old furniture in that building, so this is just sort of a continuation of the effort to replace some of the older furniture in that building. High school masonry repairs, we've been doing all kinds of high school masonry repairs for years. It was just a lot of poor workmanship around the high school. Last fall, we kind of had an emergency issue on the east side of the building, there's a terrace out behind the auditorium off the back of the stage, and there are brick planters that are built up on that terrace, and those began to leak last fall. We did get those pulled out in the fall, and they have to be filled in with concrete this spring, that should be done in the next couple of weeks. But there's also a similar planter or planters on the other side of the building, on the west side. The brick around the perimeter of those planters is deteriorating, and we're concerned that those planters will start leaking sometime in the future as well. Underneath those planters is our receiving area, where we've got a lot of material that comes into the building, a supply room where a lot of our custodial supplies, paper products are stored, and our main electrical room and generator room, so we really want to keep those areas dry. So, this would focus on removing those planters and pouring new concrete in their place, so there would just be a big open space up there. Next, the next two items are high school computer upgrades, and maybe Susan, you can talk about these a little bit more, this is more of a technology department thing, I haven't really been...
Yeah, this is to replace equipment at the high school that's seven years old. The, our tech department is having difficulty getting parts for some of the machines up there and some of the projectors, and it also would require a new cabling, so it's an expensive project. There is electrical work also that's involved here, and as you can see, there's also replacing the amplifiers that go with each of the machines. So, it's both the way that the computer and the projectors talk to one another, so it's a big, obviously that's a big expense, but it's been, our tech, I cannot say enough about our tech department and the job that they do in terms of keeping things running, they really do an amazing job, and, but they can only be magicians for so long, and then eventually the equipment will need to be replaced.
At the joint ed meeting, we raised some questions that would be helpful to get an explanation, about the desktops, there are 54 desktops, there are 80 Chromebooks that are on your list, and can you talk about the sort of theory behind those?
Yeah, they want to have a desktop in every room because people are moving in and out of the rooms all the time, so they want to have, you know, it's the device where attendance gets taken, it's the device where, that talks to the projector itself. They also want to have Chromebooks available for staff that's moving, we also have some staff that are shared between buildings. What I would suggest on this, what I would like to do, is I would like to have Don Skane come and present what the thinking is behind this, as a member of the, or maybe even have the technology committee come and do a presentation, and go through the details and what the thinking the technology committee come and do a presentation and go through the details and what the thinking is around all of this.
I just, I guess my question probably follows on what Boos has, what I'd like to explain to us is, why can't we do everything off the Chromebooks, attendance, talking to the projector, all that? If it's put into place correctly and designed appropriately, we should be able to do all of that.
I think the thinking behind it is that the desktops, we've been able, we get a really long life out of the desktops because they're not being moved at all, so that it, that's one of the reasons why we've been able to get like seven years out of them, so.
Yeah, I'm sure they do last one, but I, I can always add suspenders here, we need both, and that's what, I'm not clear on. I'm also going to assume that, that the technology money isn't the same pool of money, like we can't knock our computers and hire a social worker, if we're talking about two separate pools of money?
It's capital. It's capital. So when we've been looking at expense, the capital expenses for the schools, we have that balance in, from the school projects that we can tap in for capital.
Okay.
So we're looking at like different, you know, free cash is typically how we fund capital projects and prioritize those. We have to get our snow and ice deficit first, because that has to be taken right off the top, and then a couple other financial things that have to be met, and then we look at what we have left, and I have a feeling it's not going to be, probably a million dollars this year for capital, so we've, and we've got all these needs, so. Yeah.
Yeah, got it.
Any, are there additional questions or thoughts? Everybody has, I do have some thoughts, actually. And again, this is just to sort of get on the record and explain to the community, there are things that aren't on this list that are capital, things that are going to get addressed, and there are reasons why they're not on the list, and it just would be helpful to hear that. Certainly the elevator, parking lot, and replacing technology at Brezner and Molen. And it just, I think it would help for the community to hear why those don't leave this list, and what list are they on?
The roof as well, is that, the high school roof is on?
It's here?
It's maybe in their list and not in ours.
Oh, it's not in our list?
No, it's not.
No.
We just had like six.
Yeah, we just went through everything that we've got on our list.
Yeah, that's our, that's our complete list.
Oh, that's not the list I went to the city council?
That was the list that Ethan sent out last week.
That's bizarre.
I think it may have just been items that were on the current year in the capital plans.
Okay, that might be, because some of these, you know, like there's the tennis court at the North Molen, it's a low priority, especially since the high school students all parked on that tennis court when you had to combine the schools during renovations. Yes, so the, the parking, paving and lighting upgrades, that's the, the school project money has been targeted for that. But we talked about the walkways, there's the tennis court.
Yeah, NOC, the NOC gym and auditorium roof replacement, but that's, that's years away before we have to consider that.
Mentioned, did you, NOC furniture replacement, you mentioned, high school roof replacement, high school auditorium plaster repairs?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something that I would prioritize after we get the roofs done at the high school, I wouldn't do that now because.
Okay, so really the list you have is, is the high priorities that you want to advance, well, I don't know.
Is that just like medium and opposite of what we're looking at?
Yeah, I think, given that, I don't think the fact that we're going to hold off on the high school computer upgrade and projector upgrade till we get a presentation should prevent us from moving the other things forward and then adding this to the list once we get the presentation, if that's what we decide to do.
Well, it's on the list, and it's on the city's list as well.
It's in here, it's already in the capital plan. So I, you know, you can work out details because, because this is just sort of a general description of, of what the need is, and then as it is, funding is advanced, that's when you're, we're going to need a lot more detail.
So from a parliamentary point of view, I guess, we're just voting to receive the report, is that pretty much what we're doing?
Yeah. I mentioned in joint ed that the, some of these things have been on the list for a very long time. I remember lengthy discussions with Erford Fowler about high school masonry repairs.
But there was never a capital plan? That's the, you know, there was never, it was just sort of something would happen and you'd either do or you didn't.
Yeah.
But now there's a strategic way of looking at citywide capital plans.
Do I have, let's get this to a point where we can discuss it, do I have a motion to accept this report?
Motion to accept this report?
Accept the report of cat F Y 2018 capital projects for funding consideration.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Conversation, discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So received. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Did you get your report on schools and energy and all that yet? Because you usually do one for us around this time.
Yeah, I haven't come in and talked to this group yet. I did a kind of a written report for Nancy Wysocki, she, I noticed she had some of that information in one of her information packets that she passed out tonight, but I can, I can put something together.
Could you let the superintendent know when you have something together for us? Because your reports are fabulous and it's really good to see that our energy costs and usage and, you know, you do a great job with that, Steve.
Yeah, that'd be a good opportunity to talk a little bit about a, a project I'm working on, kind of getting in gear at the high school for some additional energy reduction there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Have high school field trip?
This is a trip that has been done for many years. It's the one to New York City. These are students who are involved in the elements back in design, and it's not a mandatory trip, but it's the, it's the theater trip that they take every year to the city. And they provided details of what they would be doing. It's April 13th to the 15th.
Motion to approve the field trip to New York City?
Second?
Any discussion? I always feel a little touch of pride when this trip comes up every year, but I'm the born and raised there. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific. I'll give the superintendent, the superintendent's report.
All right, so in your packets, I provided a copy of the school calendar and I have three minor changes that I would like to propose, which as soon as I find one, I can tell you about it.
Susan, can I ask a favor?
Sure.
When you guys send the, um, packet to us?
Yeah.
Is there a way to flip the images?
I'm sure there is, Kathy has been.
I like that week.
I enjoy watching you guys.
Trying to keep up with you.
Kathy has been.
There's a problem with the images?
Kathy has been in Jamaica, and so therefore you had my, my attempt. I'm sure she would do it better than I did, David, so. So let me just, let me walk you through what the changes that we are proposing. So as you know, for the second year in a row, we had to cancel our professional development day because of weather events, because we lost power, and we wanted to get the boys and girls in school. So on our, the approved calendar for 18, 19, if you look to the month of March, you would see that in March, we have the staff development day scheduled for the 15th of March. I am proposing that we move the March 15th staff development day to Monday, April 22nd, where I hope and pray that there will not be snow next year on April 22nd. And I would further propose that we then move the early release day on the 14th to Friday, the 15th in March, so we just slide it over, and then we would move the early release day in April, which is now listed as the 12th, to the 5th.
So in April, we would have early release, release day on the 5th, and the professional development day would be on the 22nd?
Correct.
Why did you want to move that day on the, the 12th?
Just to move it farther apart from the professional development day.
Does that really matter, because it was originally one right the next day?
Right, but I think that they, we just wanted to move it, we wanted to move it up to the 5th. That was, again, this came out of the leadership team when we met.
The reason for having the, the early release date, the 12th was to defend to the break?
But so does the professional development day on the 22nd.
March 14th, you were the early release, you were going to move it to when?
March 15th.
Okay, thank you.
So that was the reasoning behind it.
Is there?
So that's Easter Monday, right? You want to move that, the 22nd, this Easter Monday?
Is there, let me ask a question, is there, is there any link between what happens on the early release day and what happens on the professional development day? Is there like a project that they'll be starting?
It, it's too early for me to tell, to tell you that, but sometimes the answer to that is yes.
That, the reason I'm asking that question is, will teachers need that, that week?
Perhaps, yes.
To prepare for?
So that's one of the reasons why the suggestion was made to move it to 5th. Just gives more, it gives a span of time. And it still gives, with the professional development day on the 22nd, it still gives families that extra day.
I guess two points, well, I'll say what I always say is that I prefer as few interrupted weeks as possible, so put in the early release day on the 5th, just, that means one, two, three of the four weeks in April are cut up. The only week that's not affected is the week of the 8th. That's the week before vacation, yeah. What's that? And that's the week before vacation, so the 8th is. That's the week before vacation, so it is what it is.
Isn't that a typical MCAS week too?
It, we talked about that as, again, that's, we always have to work around that anyhow.
Right, so I would, I would like to cut up even fewer days in April, because the classes are already disrupted. I guess my second point is that canceling the, canceling the professional development day in, on the 15th, I understand, you guys want to get the professional day back, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Instead of just not having it?
Yeah.
So, you know, I'd always suggest moving it to the beginning of the year, where you're safe, or the end of the year, where you're safe.
Well, I mean, I think, I think April 22nd, I think is a pretty safe day.
Right, but it cuts into the school calendar, so I just, instead of extending the student year to push it?
It doesn't extend the student year, it's a, it's a, it's a trade-off from the 15th to the 22nd.
Right, but this year we, we canceled it, so that means the, instead of extending the student year by another day with a snow day, we cut the, right, we cut the professional day and put the students back in school, so it, as if we still, we had five school day, five snow days. So what I'm saying is if we guaranteed it, I guess I would like to think of that professional day in March as a sixth snow day, and if we want to make up the professional day, you could put it in June.
But the problem with June is that oftentimes when we have a professional, the reason that you have a professional development day during the year is because there's work to be done after it, so when you hold it to the very end of June, there's no time left, so that's one of the reasons why you, you have professional development during the year.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I, I understand that. So you can either adjust the early release days to push that out, or we could do the professional day in August. I just, I hate, I hate the idea of hacking April up into, into little pieces.
Well, plus, if we're in the same situation we were this year, and you'd say you want to add that one back, now you're trying to add a day that's coming back from vacation, that's the day after Easter, whereas more people, it would be tougher to add that back.
Well, I, I also think that you're, you're coming back after vacation, so I think staff is coming back to a professional development day after a week off, so I think that's a great time to do professional.
I just mean, I just mean if we're in the, the same spot as last year, where now we've got to, now, now we're, we're going to add a school day then, because we've had.
I have two other considerations to, to talk about as far as the, the calendar goes. One of the things that some districts do, and again, this, this might be very controversial here in your report, but that you build right into your calendar and say that if you lose more than five days, that you automatically begin to take the days in April vacation, and you begin with the Friday, and you build that into your calendar, so that, that people know going into the school year that in fact, if they make plans for that week, that, you know, depending upon how many snow days you have, it's just, it's just one more safety valve, so that's one option. The second thing that I would like to talk with you about is that the teachers' union has proposed, teachers, in order to make up the professional development day, that would typically be a day on the calendar, they came to me and proposed, because they're working in professional learning communities, that groups would like to work outside of the school day and/or during April vacation to try to make up those seven hours, so that there's not an extra day tacked on. Right now, the last day for staff would end up, let me look at my calendar. Would be that Monday, June 25th, and what they're proposing is that they would work in their PLCs outside of the school day to do the work that they had planned on the professional development day, and we had people doing a variety of different things, so they asked me if I would consider that, and I wanted to make you aware that that was one of the proposals that they had come forward with, and talked with the leadership team about it, and they're generally in favor of it, so, and I bring that to you as well.
I've worked in districts that do both of those. In New York, actually, because all schools have to end at the same time for Regents exams, you can't go over your snow day, you can't extend the school year, so any days you go over five, it comes off the back end of April break, and if you don't use five, it gets added on to Memorial Day weekend. It's just, it's just the way it is. So I, I think we would need some lead time, like I don't know if next year's too late to start that already, but, you know, for the, for two years out, to say that April break is now in flux, I, I have no problems with that. I think it makes more sense than adding on to the last week in June after AP exams and that sort of thing. I also like the idea of the teachers getting flex time, I think you and I had spoken about that. I used to work in a district where the day before December break and the day before Thanksgiving, teachers were, it was a teacher professional afternoon, so kids had a early release, but teachers were expected to be there, or they could do the hours else, at another time, and just log their work, because we were doing like you're talking about, so I'm in favor of both of those, especially if we can knock off an entire day of the calendar, it starts to alleviate the tension of. calendar, it starts to alleviate the tension of going too late in June. I, I like, love that idea.
Susan?
Yes.
What was the April fifth, I'm sorry, I didn't write it down correctly.
Just moving the Early Release Day scheduled on April twelfth to the fifth.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
How does it make sense to have this conversation so that we have an outcome going forward, right now?
I think she's proposing a number of different things that aren't, aren't necessarily tied into one another.
We have, we have three different initiatives here. One is a moving Professional Development Day from the, from March fifteenth to April twenty-second. And the move from April, will be the Early Release Day from April eighteenth to April fifth. I think that's sort of one package, another package is approval of the flex time to make up for the Professional Development Day that was lost. And the third item would be the, the, uh, flex time in April, so I, I see these as three.
So Susan, with the March fifteenth Professional Development Day, is that what you're talking about, turning it to a flex day for the teachers? So we wouldn't have, no?
No, no.
No, that would stay as Professional Development.
So when do they want to do their, like...
That's for this year, right?
That's for this year.
Where's for this year, when?
For this year, between now and the end of the year, to make up that time.
Oh, okay, so couldn't we just plan for that next year? And that way, we wouldn't have to chop off that week at the end of April, just make that day flexible hours?
I think we'd have to negotiate that.
Yeah, yeah.
We'd have to negotiate that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's something we could negotiate.
Oh, they're coming to us, I'm saying, they're coming to us with the idea.
This idea for one time.
Yeah.
But...
Yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't carry on that in the future. That was, my discussion was for this coming year. If we wanted to move it forward, it would be part of negotiations next year.
Or reopen the contract, but I don't see reopening it for...
Well, you're negotiating next year.
You're negotiating next year.
Right, because I'm thinking like that, for that one, instead of having that one day, if they really wanted to do it during school hours, they could work the afternoon before Thanksgiving and the afternoon before December break.
But again, that has to be negotiated.
I know, I'm just saying, but that's, I'm just thinking out loud.
Mm-hmm.
And then we wouldn't have to have that day in the calendar.
Well, can, we can, um, let me think. Start contract negotiations in the fall, because the contract is up in June of 2019. We could certainly make it an early part of our conversation with them, but I think, I don't see approving a calendar that makes that adjustment until we've had a chance to negotiate it with them. But, but I think we should go in and try to negotiate that.
Okay.
I mean, that is the procedure, that makes the most sense. So we want to talk about moving the, do you want to take it each, each item?
I think, yeah, that's a...
Do I have a motion to move the Professional Development Day from March fifteenth to April twenty-second?
So moved.
Second?
Conversation, dialogue.
Discussion.
No more than I've already offered.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Second item is...
I want to say opposed.
I did.
The second item is switching the Early Release Day from April twelfth to April fifth. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
This is moving it from April twelfth, 2019, to April fifth, 2019. It's Early Release Day.
Well, all right, can I just ask a question? So, so does that March fourteenth stay an Early Release Day?
It becomes the fifteenth.
That comes the fifteenth, but we haven't voted on that, right?
Right, we haven't voted on that yet.
Further conversation. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Aye, aye.
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 Two are in favor, the rest are opposed. So it looks like that stays.
But you did move the, the fifteenth to the twenty-second.
Yes.
Fifteenth of March goes to the twenty-second of April. The Early Release Day stays on the...
The twelfth.
The twelfth.
Stays on the twelfth. And then we have a decision to make on whether Friday comes...
Moving the fourteenth to the fifteenth.
So motion to move the Early Release Day on March fourteenth to March fifteenth for the next academic year.
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have the flex time proposal?
What, so what is the motion here, to take it to negotiations?
No, this is, we have for this...
Oh, for this year?
For this year, we have a proposal.
Okay. I move that we, uh, accept the superintendent's recommendation on allowing teachers to use flex time to make up for their Professional Development Day, the misteered weather.
Second?
Discussion.
Question. What is it that allows them to come to us with a proposal like this, but we have to go into negotiations with them to make a proposal for next year?
Good question.
It's, it's a, a matter of that you have to have the discussion with them. They came to us with, and had the discussion with me. I brought it to you. It's the same thing that happens a, as part of negotiations as well for the future, but this, this was specific to this year.
And about, could, what prevents us from going back, so, all right, we'll give you this year, but then next year?
I think they'd, I, I, I think that they'd be willing to do it.
Yeah.
But, but in my suggestion, and I think what Bruce was suggesting, is that you want to make it part of your negotiations discussion, as part of, of the total negotiations.
I understand that, but, but my, my question is, what is different about them coming to us with a simple request and treating it like a simple request?
They lost the day.
They lost, that day is already in the contract, and they lost the day, so they were, in effect, they're coming up with a way to preserve the day.
I understand that, so we're suggesting the same thing next year.
Mm-hmm, and I just think they have to do it. Yeah, we've got to do it through negotiations, so moving forward.
Yeah, no, I think that that's the cleanest way to do it.
Okay.
We take it to negotiations, we say...
I'm, I'm in favor of both sides, so I'm not going to vote no against, I'm just, I just don't understand the difference.
And I think they'll, they'll probably be in favor, well, moving forward.
Okay.
I don't think it's a bad idea.
Have we gotten a second on Nick's motion then?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good choice.
Okay, for a school choice, um, right now, we have had sixteen applications for fifteen slots that we talked about in grade nine. Um, and my, I know you've had some discussion about this, as to whether or not you wanted to open some slots in both grade one and grade six.
Your recommendation is?
Yeah, I would recommend that you open up five seats in each.
Say, grade one and six?
Grade one and six, yes.
There's no opportunity to add like five and four, too, or no?
Um, bit, no, I don't think there is. Um, based on the needs that I have coming into Mullen, Sean, for this, for next year in terms of students' transition in, um, I have seven sections at fourth grade next year, and I have eight sections of fifth grade, and we have a lot of IEPs. I have over, I want to say I have close to eighty IEPs in Mullen next year. So I'm, I would not be recommending, um, grade two for that, for that very reason.
Service intensive.
Grade five with a hundred and fifty kids seems like, at least for, you know, the grades four, three, eight numbers, seems really low. So, you know what I'm saying, like, like right now, we're hovering at two, in, in the NOC, two oh one, two hundred, one seventy-one, and then we're going to go to one, we're going to add a class of one fifty, which seems to leave a lot of space there. So I appreciate the five, but it seems like we could fit a whole lot more.
Well, again, you know, remember that they're based on, it's based on teams, I mean, you can, you, if you, I wouldn't want to go more than ten, remember that you also have new students that move in every year, too?
Yep.
So we average, typically, both Mullen and NOC, they average about ten per class, sometimes more than, I mean, we've had years where we've had nineteen, where we've had to, we actually had to add, I can't remember what year I was here, that we had, ended up having to add a class. Um, but that's the, the other piece that you need to keep in mind, is just new kids coming in.
I was just looking at the relative margins, and maybe the, the kids coming in number is bigger at the middle school than the high school, but the margin, the indifference between, like, what's coming in for eighth grade that we're adding fifteen seats for is less than that one fifty class, so that's, that's all I was thinking about, it seems like a bigger gap. And so I guess my question is, if we're going from, well, it looks like we're going to have twenty fewer students in the Mullen next year than this year? Because we're going from, we're leaving, losing one seventy-one, we're gaining one fifty.
Yeah, again, there, there will be, there will be move-ins.
So your recommendation is?
I said five, I mean, I, I'm comfortable, I would be comfortable, because I don't think we get the same play at younger grade levels, since it's similar that we do at the high school. There's a lot of interest at the high school. So I mean, we could certainly open ten.
I mean, and I don't want to push it, I'm just, I'm just asking for the, for the thought, for your thinking there.
We certainly could do that, um...
Personally, I'll defer to you, so if you say five, I'll, I'll go five.
I mean, split the difference and say seven, all right? That's an option, too.
Gambling woman.
When these open up to the, went to the lottery, um, because I had a parent ask me, they're, they thought it was going to be fifth grade potentially opening up, not sixth. When they put their kid's name in, does it, does it stay, or do they have to do it again the next year?
No, they have to do it again next year.
Each year, just apply every time?
Yeah.
And we, 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 we set a number, and once we set that number, you don't necessarily do a lottery until you get applications that exceed that.
Right, like the high school, right, go ahead.
Yeah, you kind of hope that you don't have to vote. Hope you don't have to vote, because somebody's going to be disappointed.
So, um, the superintendent's recommendation is to open up five seats at first grade and seven seats at sixth grade?
Seven.
Seven.
Okay.
Sixth grade. Do I have a motion?
So a motion to accept the superintendent's...
I got a move in the second, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Nick moved, Dave seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else you want to add?
Uh, no.
We have subcommittee reports. Join Ed, just met.
Finance?
Yep, we'll do finance, and I'll come back around and get in.
All right, so we met last Wednesday, twenty-eighth. One agenda item was the budget update, which we've pretty much covered tonight. I don't think I need to run through that again. Uh, we did talk about transportation going out to bid. We do expect, uh, multiple bidders, but we're not sure who will eventually put on, you know, a final bid. Usually lately, it's just been Salter that's put the bid in, so we do anticipate, uh, multiple bids, however. We also had some transfers, uh, several to mitigate against some increased transportation costs related to homelessness and a McKinney-Vento requirement. Uh, and we also had some transfers related to, uh, some, uh, needs for, uh, staff, example, a grade-two leave of absence, uh, a new hire, uh, within the business office, and, uh, some changes in, I guess, plane additions for some, for a number of teachers. And we also talked about the bringing together municipal charges agreement with the city of Newburyport for the end of the year, which involves, uh, coordinating administrative accounts between municipal finance and school finance, according to school finance regulations.
As I had said, Join Ed met prior to our meeting, and a couple of interesting points came out of that meeting. We continue to have a conversation about the capital plan, and one of the things that the city council encouraged us to do is what we did tonight, and that is to hear on an annual basis what is on the list, how it's shifting in priorities, and then take that report and vote to file it, um, so that we've received it and we're staying more informed. We talked about the need for better communication, Steve Burman, um, Burke Home. Talked about better communications, and in the spirit of that, kind of went over the list with us. And, um, one other interesting thing that I thought came out of the meeting was the suggestion that, um, the high school do a design study or a study to see what are we going to need to replace, what are we going to need to deal with in that building over a longer period of time than a couple of years, um, that, that will sort of be able to then map out what that building, what we anticipate that building needs. And that was, again, that was a suggestion, showing, showing, telling me, which I thought was actually a pretty good idea, to just really understand what we've got in that building. Policy?
Yes, we met on Saturday, um, and we'll have a more complete report for you at the next meeting, because we have some other things to do, uh, but, uh, we spent a fair amount of time talking about, uh, our credit policy for kids eating when they don't have the cash on hand, uh, and how we're going to deal with that, um, and, uh, and there were a couple of other, uh, state and federal mandates that we had to take a look at and take care of in our policies. And, uh, finally, we also spent some time talking about whether or not we wanted to have a policy specific to sophomore-graduated schools.
And it may have to be the first meeting in May, because I have the plans reviewed on next week, and that's going to, that's going to tie me up for a lot of next week. We are being, we're being reviewed for special education, for, um, offices of civil rights, and for our ELL next week, so we have State Department people in, um, so...
If you can send me the, the digital copy, I can do the editing, but...
Yeah.
All I had was PDF, so that's right.
Yeah.
Unable to do the editing.
Great, I think Courtney of Destruction did not need?
No, he didn't, so our next meeting is April thirtieth.
Superintendent's evaluation hasn't met, um, and I, just before I take a motion in adjournment, I would note that, um, we did not do item eight. We did not do item eight, which was the proposed school budget vote. We did have a discussion about the budget in the hearing, so we understand that things are very fluid, and, um, we can anticipate a possible vote at the end of April, if not our first meeting in May. We want to make sure we give them their time to, uh, deal with the budget, and I think that we only give her about seven days, not ten, if you vote the first meeting in May. May. So, um, I, I do think it's, I do think it's prudent with things being in flux to hold off as late as we can, because things really are in flux, so. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So our, our next meeting in April, because of April vacation, is that the?
It's the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, the Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Yeah, I just wanted to check the question.
Say that Bruce and I did meet with, um, Sean Gallagher, uh, just in terms of point of order, and, um, we essentially used the benchmarks that, you know, we discussed, and, you know, about reaching those, and he's gone back to, you know, read a very standard, um, contract that we used with Susan also in terms of that, and, so he is reviewing, thinking, you know, all those pieces, and he's coming back on April eleventh, and hopefully we will, we will have a, a formal contract on that point, as we already know, but it was a very, very good meeting.
Very good.
Very, very positive.
I ran into him at ASCD, I was very excited.
He is very excited about.
Great.
Now I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.